United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this bill, with liberty and justice for all.
I also would like to call this meeting order because they will call me.
Kevin McGovern?
President?
Ian Patterson?
Here.
Kamala Harris?
Here.
Here.
Public comment, given you, Ted Kelly first?
Yes.
Okay?
I have two issues that I want to talk about, and I'll keep them under three minutes. The first one concerns the planner, and in last year's budget, we had $900, or somewhere along the line, we had $900 for her to do the comprehensive plan. I disagreed with that, and it was Mr. McGovern who said that it would be better to have her do that than to have it done on the outside, because we could monitor her better. So at the Financial Town Meeting, if that $900 is going to be in there, then I will ask the question, what have you done to verify the fact that for the money that we have spent her, that she has provided an adequate amount of material to the council? That's the first one. Second one is Mr. DiGogorio. He seems to be going around, and every time I read an article, it says, "Mr. DiGogorio, planning board." And then I read another article in The Independent that Mr. DiGogorio wrote about the rodeo, I believe it was, and he stated that he was speaking for the planning board and had the approval of the town council, had the support, complete support of the town council. I think this is a little bit ridiculous, that that man is going out and he's presenting himself as being, speaking for the entire town. Now, we had a situation where you had to take over, Mr. McGovern, for him doing that, and there seems to be no way to stop this man from representing the entire town. I think that's an injustice. I think it's wrong. When I wrote to the newspaper and I asked the Standard Times, "Oh, we put that in there all the time, because we want people to know who he is." Why? I wrote a letter. Nobody said that I was on the Board of Assessment Review, and I think it's unfair to the rest of the town and to the town council.
Yes, good afternoon, good evening. I just would like to acknowledge my dear friend Frank Ma being here in this chair. I've worked with him for months recuperating, and I just wanted to say congratulations to have you back here, buddy, and it just makes my heart warm to see you sitting there. I'm very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Does anyone else wish to speak?
I'd like to say something, please. Obviously, I have no really business being here, because I don't represent Exeter anymore, but I am here for one of my best friends, I think, in the universe, Frank. Frank Spencer, hell and back, and he's here, and I want to thank the town council for sticking it out and not listening to Bob Johnson, or what's that guy's name? I don't even like to say his name.
Frank DiGogorio.
Thank you, for not listening to any of them, trying to oust out Frank. I mean, obviously, you don't pick a guy when he's down, but I guess that's what they do. Welcome back, Frank. I love you. I'm so happy you're here.
Thank you.
Next, we have our acknowledgements and announcements. First, around Resource Recovery Corporation, it's having their ECA Depot, Saturday, July 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. noon, here at the Town Certs Office, 75 Tenry Road in Exeter. And then also, June 13th, at 7:00 p.m., we're having our Exeter Financial Town Meeting, which is at the Exeter West Greenwich High School Auditorium. Are there any other acknowledgements or announcements by the council?
Who's the date again, please?
For which one?
At the town council.
Oh, the Friday's announcement. June 13th.
Seven o'clock.
I got one thing. Military training exercise, people know.
You can share a lot of people.
Get a letter from the governor, they were saying how they're going to have a military exercise between the dates of June 5th to June 11th down at the Fire Academy. So if you see a lot of activity going on around helicopters, military personnel here, different noises, that's what's going on, so just figure.
It'll be this evening, from 9:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Kevin? Also, I wanted to let everyone know, the Exeter Public Library, on Saturday, June 17th, is having a free family day from 1:00 to 4:00, and they're going to have also some education and fun stuff for kids.
Please allow a report. Thank you. Doug, is there a motion to approve the agenda order as presented?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
You consent agenda? We did have a Reynolds voucher. Is there any reports anybody would like to remove? All right. Alan, communications?
Ask me, you do it.
Yeah, yeah.
I four, 13, 15, 26, which is in reference to an appointment that we may be making, and number 30.
Right? Right?
No, 29.
I have one more set as well. Minutes, did they need to read the vote? Four, actually.
No one's in here on the town.
So actually, we had to do a poll of all of them. Frank was not here for any of the, we're pulling all the meetings. Motion, I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So first, we have, you said we had to pull a fourth, for dinner? All right. How, was it a 10?
10.
So I'll make a motion that we approve, the regular council meetings were made first, and the regular council meeting executive session made first, the special council meeting May 8th, and the special council meeting executive session May 8th.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Stand?
No.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special meeting for May 4th.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And then? And then I'll make a motion that we approve the special council meeting on May 10th, number 17. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstained with my absence.
You abstained from that vote? When I said aye, I thought we were, I thought that's what you were indicating, is if I said aye, I was going along with the amended minutes, but obviously, I wasn't.
Usually, it must be an abstain. Frank, you want to abstain, then, from those of you who weren't present.
Okay. I misunderstood, I misunderstood the motion.
Yeah, that's customary.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Vacancies, appointments, planning personnel board, conservation commission, and economic development. Any resignations?
No.
Appointments, number one, juvenile hearing board member on expired term ending March 19th, term beginning with the appointment.
Yeah, I believe we're waiting for some feedback from the hearing board. We had a candidate who wanted to interview us, so I think we need to wait for that feedback.
Look, I think we'll do that after now. All right. Number two, the Reynolds Charitable Trust Committee member, term commended with appointment expiring three years from appointment.
I move that we reappoint Cynthia Sullivan to the charitable, Reynolds Charitable Trust Committee, based on her communication to us, number 26, indicating the willingness to continue to serve.
I'll second that.
Is there any question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we do have public hearings. Proposed amendments to the Exeter Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 6, Juvenile Hearing Board. And with that, there is a change to what was presented in your packet. I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was saying, there is a change, if you go to section 2-253, it's the second page of the actual thing, where it says, "Omit that." Cross omit that out. Does the council have any questions, changes they wish to make to the?
No, it was apparent, as you recall from, I remember you last month, that they were actually trying to make, or create or amend the amendments, so that it was more applicable to the work they had to do, and they changed, so they identified some different people, and there were a couple of agreements of subject and verb, which we correct. So I think it looks like it's a.
I agree. Is there anybody who signed up for public comment? Would anybody like to speak in the public regarding the change? No public comments from the council?
I move that we close the public hearing.
All right, I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll move that we accept the proposed amendment to the Exeter Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 6, Juvenile Hearing Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your business, labor issues, labor negotiations? Number nine, RB, Department of Public Works, awarding a bid chip seal. Wait, we're going to speak to this? Did you want to speak to the bid?
No, no, we go to, we go to Weber's machine, he recommended, he made the final, he made a recommendation to us.
Any question?
I'll make a motion, award a bid chip sealing, award the bid to New England Asphalt Services LLC, Northford, Connecticut, price per square yard is $1.37 a place.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Number C, Department of Public Works, request to proceed to bid for heating and cooling upgrades to the Town Certs Office here in Exeter.
You want to explain? The money was awarded in the Financial Town Meeting, passed, number one, and we do have issues with some possibility, hot, cold, we've got doors open in the winter, because it gets too hot upstairs, so we're going to try to minimize the inconsistencies, but we have our challenges with this, two buildings and two furnaces and all, so we have to come into it with you.
That's good.
I request, before we advertise, could you give me the specs a couple days before we just start?
Dan, we're going to do it, the design is built, and then we can review prior to the bid award, because it's just so technical with these new heat pumps and AC-type units.
That's why I made the other sure.
Exactly. That's why we met with, what, three or four different vendors at this point, and the design build seems to be the best way to move forward with this type of equipment.
I move that we proceed to bid for the heating cooling upgrades at the town hall.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close? Next is item B, introduction, consideration, and possible action, resolution in opposition to House Bill 5475, and Senate Bill is 0481, an act relating to cities and towns subdivision of land. We do have a resolution before us, 2017-4, and would you like to read this?
Town Exeter Resolution Number 2017-04, in opposition to House Bill 2017-85475, and Senate Bill 2017-S0481, an act relating to cities and towns subdivision of land. Whereas, House Bill 2017-H5475, an act relating to towns and cities subdivision of land, and companion Senate Bill 2017-S0481, have been introduced in the Rhode Island General Assembly, and whereas, this act proposes to reduce the state mandated time periods for review of major land development and subdivision application, to reduce the time periods for recording land use decisions, and to impose a penalty on municipality equivalent to 50% of the application fee if the time period is not met, and whereas, the practical effects of this legislation for our town and others will be to put unreasonable time pressures on the town planner and the planning board as applied to the largest and most complex types of developments and subdivisions, and whereas, these major applications represent the projects with the most site impacts, infrastructure, and technical issues involving testimony from various experts such as engineers and lawyers, and requiring the board members to absorb design and technical details, and whereas, these plans often require review by the town's own professional experts, oftentimes making it necessary for the board to receive additional information and/or revised plans before a final vote and the affirmative can be made, and whereas, shortening time periods for review may force the board to vote with restrictive conditions or even a vote to deny, and will not serve the interests of applicants and developers, and whereas, these proposed changes are significant and will propose without any initial input from the municipalities. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council, the town of Exeter respectfully requests that all state senators, representatives, and the governor oppose House Bill 2017-H5475, and companion Senate Bill 2017-S0481. Be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Governor Gina Raimondo, Senate President Dominic Ruggiero, Speaker of the House Nicholas Matteello, State Senator Lyle Morgan, State Representative Justin Price, and State Representative Julie Casmero, Executive Director of the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns Brian Daniels, and to each municipality in the state of Rhode Island, they're requesting them to defeat this amendment to the general laws.
Hope you like.
I'd like to move to adopt that resolution to discussion.
I'll second. Go ahead, Cal.
Well, if you recall, we discussed this last month, because we had received resolutions in opposition from East Greenwich and Charlestown, and so as we looked at it, if you recall, we passed it along to the planning board to ask for their response, and you have seen probably the response that we got from the planner, which, well, I'd just like to mention, because I spoke to her some length about this this morning, and it's a timely issue, for sure, and maybe just moving forward with disregard for all the concerns that have been expressed, let me just, if I could, speak to what we can tell. We have a memo from June 1st, sent to us by the planner, in which she says that the planning board has discussed the correspondence they received regarding these bills, they unanimously agree that they support the council's opposition to these bills, opposes the state odds, and are in favor of the language drafted in opposition, that is, our resolution that's before us tonight, this motion. But here's the troubling part, and you've read this, I hope, the House Committee on Municipal Government passed a subay, a substitute bill, went to the floor for a vote, was passed there as well, since the opposition was drafted and considered by the town council, that is, what we had before us. There had been modifications, I can tell you a little bit about them, but the fact is that there's still a timeline in place, which is troubling. It's, and what I found out this morning, because Ashley was just alerted, that it's scheduled for not a hearing, but a consideration before a senate committee on the 7th, two days from now, but no vote's going to be taken, well, the vote may be taken, but no additional testimony, so they're really shutting people down. Apparently, the subay bill made some changes, but the timeframe is still very tight, where a response has to be made, which is, which is the concern of these other towns, and you see in your packet, that we also just received resolutions opposing the bills from Westerly and Gloucester. I can't speak for Gloucester, but East Greenwich, Charlestown, Westerly, they all have engineers in place, they all have full-time staffs, at least planners, in place, to address the master plans that come in, and the timeframe is just way too short, and everybody agrees with that, but, so here we are in a position where we may oppose this if we approve the resolution, but I just think people need to know that it is moving forward. Let me just share with you a thought that she gave me this morning. She, that's Ashley, the planner, has sent a letter to the president of the Rhode Island American Planning Association, that is, the Rhode Island chapter of that national organization, asked that he request that the senate committee take additional testimony, and she does not sure it will go live yet, but she felt compelled to speak on behalf of Exeter Planning Department and others that are concerned, and she, I did not know that, I suspect the Legislative Liaison, maybe the rest of you knew this, the Legislative Liaison from the Rhode Island chapter of the American Planning Association, and she said at this point, she's so frustrated that she will probably tell the association she's not doing it, because people don't respond, and instead, they move ahead, as they have with this bill, which East Greenwich, Charlestown, Matt Westerly, Gloucester, and others perhaps, and we don't know enough, have spoken in opposition. She said the request should go to all senators and representatives, so that they know that this is not an acceptable piece of legislation. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take up a lot of time, but I wanted to share with you what I found this today, and I just had the time, I know you don't all have the time, I came in this morning, I went to find her, and this is what I determined today, this is what I just found out. So I would advise that we go ahead and voice our opposition, and go to town side, or that's what we're.
Did you read the comments by the council?
Yeah, I've got some comments. Originally, I voted in favor of this resolution after reading the subpart A, and it's not as bad as the same count, and it did put some heat on the towns, not speaking, because I've been on both sides of the table, you sit here and wait, and wait, and wait, and one was, planning board decision, planning board shall, the old wave is 120 days, within 90 days is certificate completeness, within a further amount of time that may be consented to by the applicant, the waiver, they cleaned some of this up, this is the subpart A.
That's the subay. They made modifications.
Yes, this was passed, the House passed this on a floor vote on the 31st of May. The senate, I can imagine, they're going to, subpart A, Frank, they're going to hear more testimonies?
We would hope so.
Because they haven't had.
Like Calvin says, you don't know.
They haven't, they haven't had a.
They may fast-track it, they may not.
The original hearing was held on the 29th of March, and the subpart A is here, once I've read through this, I don't really have a problem with it. We hear these towns and planners saying that they're blindsided by this, and I would think they would take the time and go up there and testify with their concerns, and that's one of my issues, you know, if you know about this, get up there, so that's all I got to say.
Well, okay, if I could counter what you just said, she was informed just this morning, it's going to the senate two days from now, for consideration, no testimony, no hearing, it's just going there, because she expects, as Frank you suggested may happen, that it's just going to be fast-tracked out to the floor, because there is support, and if it happens, it happens, and if you're writing in that these modifications are livable, then the other towns that have objected along with our own planning board, they'll just be fine, but it wasn't so bad after all.
Not comparing towns, but I know like the DEM, some of their timeframes are even stricter than this, that means applications and that, so, and normally, what they do is they'll just stand up, so.
You mean, no on the application?
Yeah, to cover their thoughts and send it back to yourself.
Well, if that, and if that's the approach that's taken.
Which, which happens in some towns, the way the law is written with this.
I hear you, I hear you. So, if it moves forward, and on a fast track, it does, and we deal with it later, but I'm just responding to the towns that already shared with us their concern, we passed it on to the planning board, they spoke to us back through this memo, and indicated that they supported our resolution.
Any further discussion?
All I can say, Mr. President, is that Calvin has some points as well as Dan, but from my experience, usually what happens is, is that if they're going to fast-track this for some reason or another, and I'm not assuming that that's going to happen, but usually, it's the senate president that's telling the chairman to move it along. So if that's the case, you could literally have something happen today, and it could change again tomorrow, and that's why you've seen a subay of the bill already, because there may be a specific reason, is it, is there any common, is there any common issue that relates all these towns together? Because that's usually what I look for. If, is it a common issue that relates all these towns together with that?
What it does.
A specific project, then sometimes, you can, you can figure out why it is that they want what they want.
What it is, when you're going through the planning process, submit an application, they have so many days to answer you. Certification, there's different steps, like, the first one is, originally, under the old law, 60 days, they've cut that down to 25. What they're doing is, they're putting, they're putting, he couldn't beat them to their feet, because some of, I'm not saying Exeter, but some of these towns just drag us out, and drag us out, and drag us out.
Oh, yeah.
They're putting some more teeth into what existing laws, what they're doing. But this, every town in the city of Rhode Island has to follow these timelines and bring them up. It covers zoning issues too, a lot of it was, had to do with recordings of decisions when you get to the back of the bill, so.
Well, like Calvin said, worst comes to worst, depending on how we go, we can always revisit.
Well, again, may I just make another comment, as Ashley Sweet pointed out, in two me and through her memo, none of the municipalities involved with this were even consulted, I mean, I don't know the genesis of the legislation, but I suspect it did not come from any planning, any planners who say, give us, I would say, they would say, give us sufficient time, Dan, I know you say, it gets dragged, and I was speaking to someone who formerly sat on the South Kingston Town Council, called me for another reason, and I said, by the way, are you tuned into this particular legislation? He said, oh, but South Kingston is so far behind, as you said, it's only people's feet to the fire, and perhaps with more staff, that can happen, maybe people do drag their feet, but here, we have a planning board that meets generally once a month.
Twice a month.
Or twice, there's a work, one a work session, and then one an official, well, anyway, I thought it was one meeting where they vote, but in any case, you're right, so, that's all, I'm just saying that I respect the other communities, our own planning board, and I would hope somebody would at least support the resolution.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion is?
For any base?
Three. Yes.
No.
Yes, two me.
No, vote here. Frank goes up. So motion fails. Moving on to item E, introduction, consideration, and possible action, proposed amendments to the Exeter Code of Ordinances, medical marijuana. We had previously requested that the planning board draft an ordinance regarding medical marijuana, and that could potentially be moved into, if the state had passed, recreational marijuana, so we do have the word before us, I do think we probably should discuss it in a work session. So we do have the word before us, I do think we probably should discuss it in a work session, potentially along with the farm overland with the planning board, so we, at that point, we discuss our calendar and things like that, as soon as possible, if anything, next year.
So, so you, you don't think we should put it out and just discuss it when planning board can come?
Well, no, that's it.
You don't want a public hearing scheduled.
Right, have it with the planning board first, and then do a, a. Yeah, so that's the, all right, so, next is item F, consideration, possible action, House Bill 17, H 6172, an act of the agriculture and forestry rights of farm. We don't have any, anything written out for all this yet, but I did have a copy of the bill itself. And what this does is it kind of takes a lot of our local municipal authority, it was to the state level, so that anything on farm, we cannot regulate. So any commercial enterprise, potentially that's not on the farm, which we're going to say, no, if it's not finally, if you can't do it, if it's not a commercial zone, they take that out of our hands.
Light fast.
And there's some other activities too, I just think that it's an overreach to state level into local municipality rules. And I know the times of the essence, I don't know anything for us, but I was wondering if you would just be able to vote and say that we'll draft a letter, this end of the state, Lynn, I can sign this end of the state, our leader, the state leadership, to get that as soon as possible before the end of session.
Lynn, didn't they have a similar one last year with the previous bill?
We had sent a, that, a couple years ago, we had sent a.
Did we see it last year?
It was a similar, it was a similar.
Yes, I mean, this one's opening it up even more. I don't even have to grow a crop, I can just have wet because I'm a farmer.
Do we have a number on the scenic companion bill?
I do not, no.
This, Conchino did this one. He's the only one on it.
Right.
Kevin, if you, if you make that motion that we move forward in opposition, second it, I will speak.
Oh, make the motion that we move in opposition to the, to the bill.
Second.
All right, continue.
I had a conversation with someone last night, who used to sit here at the council table, and then, who'd had a conversation with Jamestown, people of concern who had, some of whom had gone to testify when this House bill was heard. There were people there who opposed it. I was curious about who might have been there to support it. She said the word that came back to her was that there was only one vocal proponent present representing the Alex and I vineyards and whatever they are, wherever they were. However, why the word other people there, I'm not sure, because I think we could guess some who would certainly be supportive of the bill. As, as Dan says, it's kind of opened it up even further than it was before. Someone said, did you see, I mean, whatever. And I think there is a concern of any of those kinds of gatherings because of the numbers of people they can draw on, depending on the neighborhood. If it's in a residential area, then unless it's a small wedding with about 10 guests, if they're 150 or 200, well, no, they're parking, parking ish, I don't think, we don't have to get into it, I think we, we probably understand why.
Do we want to take the previous letter we had drafted and compare it to match this one?
If it, yeah, it speaks to these same issues. If you and, if you and Lynn, Kevin, can, can work to craft something that opposes that, that's fine. I bet Lynn can dig out that file.
I did it in 15 seconds.
Some weird stuff.
Any further discussion? All of the favors say aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 10, unfinished business, historic preservation and historic cemeteries. She can.
Updates.
Oh, please. B. IT service contract with Kingstown? All right. Request out of the emergency management director, approval of memorandum of understanding? No? All right. Next we have item D, the transfer station study committee. I believe that the committee has now finalized its report, sent to the council. I think we should at this time disband the committee formally, at the council, so I'll make a motion that the transfer station study committee is hereby disbanded. We thank them for their work, the committee is now ceased. Again, I'd like to thank those that served on the committee for their hard work, putting that report together was pretty intense. Thank you.
There've been very dedicated people came out, volunteered their time, and did a lot of accomplishment.
All right. Any further comments? All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to remove the transfer station study committee from the agenda.
I'll second the motion to remove the committee from the agenda. Further discussion? All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
All right, item E, Prizm, any updates?
Not here for Exeter, but it's, it's facing some tough times at the State House with some legislation that's been submitted that's going to roll back some of the savings to communities that have already opted in, will experience or could experience, so I'm not sure how that's going to go, but. There's been a plea for mayors and others to speak on, you know, against this legislation, but we're not, we're really not impacted right here. So, again, I'm only speaking to it because it's a, as you know, initiative through the Washington County National Planning Council, so I don't have anything else to tell you about that yet.
Item F, solid waste and recycling services agreement between the Round Resource Recovery and municipality. Right, do you have anything you want to speak on that? Or, the rap?
They have come down with a few minor corrections or changes from the last contract that they sent us the draft.
Okay.
They have not sent us a new draft yet, I'll be meeting with them on the 21st of this month, and I'll request a new draft, or they may even get it to us prior to that, and when they do, I'll follow it to the, to Jim so you can review it.
Okay.
Next meeting.
Can we get, can we get any?
Yeah.
Moving on to G, introduction, consideration, and possible action, administrative policy governing certain standards of conduct for town officers, employees, and members of town boards and commissions. We have a pretty much ready to go to work, so we're in a session. We were thinking maybe, I don't know if we got it, but maybe do that after.
Yeah, we, we can put on, because we're meeting the planning board, we put the ordinance on first, if we don't get to the other ordinance.
Then we can.
We'll just continue on.
Okay. That works. All right. So, moving on to that item, which is the introduction, consideration, and possible action, amendment to Exeter Court of Ordinances, zoning, Article 4, supplementary regulations, section 4 dot 9, Exeter Farm and Forest accessory business overlay district. Does everybody have a calendar, or maybe we want to try to pick a date in June that we can meet?
Yeah, because.
I have no idea.
Twenty second.
So, 21st is a Wednesday.
Thursday.
So, 21st is a Wednesday.
I'm leaving in the afternoon.
First game of summer, friend.
And you're coming in your hand.
Just, mine's just a weekend. What about that weekend?
This one, it's good, then the weekend.
27th or 29th? Yeah. Oh, 29th.
That's a Wednesday.
Perfect.
Nobody's saying.
The 29th? Is that, we want to see the planning board, can you go listen to 29th?
I'm open for 29th.
Cal?
I happen to know that night, I have a commitment, but, but please go ahead and make, well, absolutely, I mean, you have questions, and we'll meet with them on the, the issues that we raised on it.
Right, the, the two, the two ordinance is correct.
Please, please meet with them.
You got it.
If that changes, I'll be here.
Marijuana and the farm forest accessory overlay.
Okay, what time?
Uh, 7 o'clock. Is that where it works for everybody?
21, 29, right?
29. The last Thursday in the month.
If something changes for me, I will be here, but I know it's a commitment, it's the 18th of Florida anniversary. I'll be present.
Our town hall, correct, Kevin?
Correct.
29, June, 7 o'clock.
Oh, correct.
Got it.
All right. Next, I, impact fees ordinance review.
We have two processes going on, one, Jim is taking care of for the current ordinance, and one we're going to put as a resolution at the County Department of, whatever Jim has to update, it might be solicitor's report.
I think I'm through on this one. We were waiting for some others to, to give their, their thoughts concerning that. As far as I'm concerned, I, I reviewed, I put together.
So what, you could send to Maria?
Yeah. And I don't know where they're all at on their review position, but I'm, I'm all set from my perspective.
Yeah, I didn't see any comments over there.
Yeah, I thought there were going to be comments, and we asked for, for, I don't know if we could get some.
So put that on a work session?
Sure. Covering the back of the office. There should be some action on that eventually, because it's an important issue.
Well, I know you've been back and forth with Maria, who, who were the, who were the they again?
No, no, we had a group that were, that were all looking at it.
Okay, that's all.
I, I don't, people get busy, I have to.
They can be kind of a figure of speech, but anyway, it's good. Thank you, Maria, for working on that.
All right, moving on. Item J, per DM, vigilating in hawkers, peddlers, solicitors, licenses. We were asked the question about food trucks, if they came into the town for a whole one day.
In other.
In other events, so if there was a, like, event at Boulder Dash over at Yago, they want to bring in food trucks or have that. Do they have to get a food permit, how is that handled as a temporary? I think we were looking to, looking to other towns do for permitting of that, and try to get the ordinance, so.
I had several final information on it, so I'll put together a draft, and I think it'll, it'll probably just attach to the current ordinance, just an amendment to it. It's just a small piece. It's just going to authorize Lynn, once she's provided with certain piece of information to approve.
Based on, right?
I'm curious now, given that we know we discussed this last month, I'm wondering if we might vote to allow Ken to provide the information or the, the structure of a, of a regulation that Lynn could use. Would it, would it be oofy to have something as soon as possible, or you want to wait till July 10th? You wait till July 10th?
Yeah.
I remember the library had also inquired about for their full festival.
Yeah, they haven't come back with, it was just an inquiry, they kind of go back with, they definitely, you know, having, they were just.
I'm wondering if they could, if they could open it up and invite people to come, would those people need a license?
Right.
Correct?
Right, I'm not certain if they decided to take on it, so.
And we just need to find the list of items that would be required to, you know, to help license.
You want to wait till, until July 10th?
I would, it's not impressing, I would wait just to make sure that everything's covered, that we're not violating any of the federal law, state law, the town law, but I think we'll be able to.
So we'll, we'll continue this till, till July 10th.
We'll put it on the work session agenda. It shouldn't be that big of a queue, but it's just.
That'd be the same work session that your idea would be.
Be at rest number five.
That's number five. Okay, we'll just move.
Yeah, we'll get through it.
Start early, no late.
All right, we got your number 11, reports of officers, boards, and committees. That's up right with Public Works.
Did you say something?
All right, Public Works, we've completed all the road sweeping and catch base and cleaning and inspections townwide, and we, we're doing some tree work and preparations for all the capital programs that will be taken forward in the, after July 1st. We posted one more road to trim, which is Godner Road South, gravel section, that'll be by the end of the week hopefully, so. Other than that, it's normal operations. A lot of debris removals from culverts for beaver dams, about every other day to three days, so it keeps us quite busy. That's Public Works. Transfer station, things are running according. A lot of mattresses, still, it's very odd, we receive as many as we do, it's residence only, they all come in on stickered vehicles. And mattresses are free everywhere in the state, but we've been collecting quite a few. They had a whole another 40-yard box today, so hopefully that'll slow down a little. Again, it's not, it's no impact to us other than some time. It's a convenience for the taxpayers. Animal control's going along good, there's not that many animals, few dogs, dozens of cats. They have a pretty successful yard sale. Everything else is running, running okay.
With regards to Andy at all, could you talk to her about that? I know it's kind of tough to determine what weight loads are on the pack.
Yeah, we've adjusted the pressure on the, on the packer, that should hopefully, I'll go up there again and institute.
Okay.
In the event that we think it's an overweight load, I'd just like to ask the director how he would like if they handle it, do we just leave the load, or how do we, you know, I know it's hard, we don't have a scale there, but we can tell when the wheels are coming off the ground trying to load the box.
Right now, during, not during the council meeting, but if you guys want to be, talk to see a later date, just not during the business of the council.
Okay, yeah, if we could request that, that would be great.
Okay.
We could even talk to her tonight.
Uh?
We have.
Moving on, the tax collector's office liaison, Frank?
I'm looking to report at this time, Mr. President, I'm just getting my.
Getting a bear.
Getting back into the saddle again, so I'm sure I'll have to report.
Do you have any amounts collected?
Yes, I am to find that. Can you pass it down?
Here we go.
Thank you, sir. Tour collections for the month of May were $816,258 in expense. All monies have been reported to the treasurer, the tax. Sale had one property left which was sold. Motor vehicle denials, renewals, excuse me, have been picked up from the state treasury office and mailed, the denials of registration have been mailed to delinquent taxpayers respectfully submitted, Kimberly Rovetine.
Would you like to continue on with the?
Can I, can I just make one comment, because what Frank referenced is what we've spoken about, I've spoken, I think we know. Kim, I think four of the towns have gone out of their way to go to the D N V and process here in town, you know what I'm saying, those, those, those delinquent, delinquents renewals, people that shouldn't renew. However, that can't go on after the 1st of July because the new D N V system, computer system, will be in operation. And I only say that because I think we've all heard the news about the last initiatives that have been launched, so I think we only can hope, as does our collective hope, that this one will in fact accomplish what it should. And if it goes according to plan, and correct me if I'm wrong, it should do the work that this office and other small offices have been trying to do to keep a collection rate where it should be. And I think, she's not here, but Maria, I know you've worked on it too, so let's hope that when the new computer system's up and running, as of I think July 1st, that it So let's hope that when the new computer system's up and running, as of I think July first, that it's all gonna be good. And you're gonna, you or Kim will report back to us after a while, won't you? And tell you how well it's working. And we'll be very happy to hear a positive report, as I'm sure we'll get. Thank you. It's good to meet you.
Thank you.
That's all right, I just.
Well, no, I mean, you're right.
Should be trying hard to Kim and her staff.
She has, she has.
Perhaps that, whatever.
This, this was an issue when, when Kevin first got on the council and he was the liaison to that department. And when I was in the state legislature, I tried to get this problem fixed. And, and it was very difficult for, for Kimberly to get cooperation out of the DMV. And then the DMV would put it back on the town, so. This is, this would be, cure a lot of problems.
Well, it was over the last, you know, it gets fixed. And that people I'm sure we will always complain from, from residents about why they can't register online, so. Now they'll be able to do that and we'll move forward and hope it works.
That's right, I agree.
Frank, would you like to continue with the Exeter West Greenwich School District Liaison Report?
Yes, uh, if a school committee member who's present tonight doesn't mind being, uh, put on the spot. Can you give us, uh, can you, can you give us any details, it's dying with regards to, I got this postcard in the mail that I was asking, uh, Councilman Ellis about, that I received on regards to the class of two thousand seventeen. Like to extend an invitation for you to join us at the celebrating of the graduation ceremony that. I don't think this is the actual, uh, invitation, because in the past, the invitations are more formal.
We did receive.
Right, right, so, um. Did they, did they not already have honors night?
They had it.
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. So, uh, is there any other dates that, that just, that the public should be aware of, that they may wanna get?
June tenth.
Yeah, June tenth is graduation for, uh, the high school at Ryan Center. Uh, June twenty-second is the last day of school and also the moving up for the junior high and stuff.
It's just a point of information or curiosity, I might play. Do you, do you know like a rough number of graduates? I'm curious, I know, you may be a gentleman, but.
Yeah, I don't really.
How many are graduating? I know that it grows, it's okay, it grows, I'm just curious if it's a hundred and fifty or a little less or more or?
Well, I, I was reading an article the other day and it said that Exeter West Greenwich is now at, uh, the tops in the state with ninety-eight percent graduation rate.
Yeah, we're doing, yeah.
So.
Was that, that's real news, not any fake news or anything?
No, that, no, that's not out of the national boy.
Well, I just think that's, that's pretty amazing, I mean, it's a wonderful thing.
I can't remember, I can't remember if it was out of Rhode Island magazine, but it was something with reputable sources.
No, that's good, no, no, it's good. I mean, I just know the reputation of the whole system keeps growing. I, I just, a lot of people have a lot of good things to say, which is great.
That's cool.
That's real news.
We have to change our meeting to the fourteenth because you're meeting on Tuesday, what we usually meet.
Right.
With financial town meetings, so we're moving on, we're meeting on Wednesdays after your meeting.
Okay. Thank you for letting me put you on the spot.
Next, we have the tax assessors office liaison report, Kevin Ellis.
Just thanks, Kevin, just, just, well, kind of three items of significance. One is the, the figure that Exeter, that the hit will take and assuming will be reimbursed if the tax proposal moves forward to slightly under a hundred thousand dollars. And I, I understand that all across the state, does it please, that is P-L-E-A-S, not to put this into effect immediately because budgets are completed. We're going to financial town meeting. We can assume that that hundred thousand dollars that we included as anticipated revenue will in fact be reimbursed. But maybe when or, or, as I said to someone, well, we just, the budget gets a little tighter and we just won't have any sort of a. Haven't had much of a surplus lately, we won't have any, well, if that goes anyway. That's a little under a hundred thousand from the assessor's office. She also wants people to know that the statistical evaluation has actually begun and people, visits are being made. Uh, and people are being noticed, if they, if they're not home, they can request or else it's gonna be an outside walk around and then, and then the statistical, this is a statistical review. And then the decision is made and then we go from there as to a value. And, um, the payment in lieu of program, proposal, back and forth with the silver company that's in place next to the poster office is, uh, is moving forward. And I think, I think she said you looked at it.
I have a bit of a feedback, I mean.
And, and I appreciate that you've worked with her because I know she's very concerned that it, that be put in place. Will be the one time only, as I understand, because moving forward, there's a whole new, uh, regulation will be in place for anything new that comes along. And, um, I think that's, that's it.
Would you like to continue on with the Washington County Regional Planning Council?
Well, there I have very little, we did meet, uh, early in, uh, right after our last council meeting. Two of us who attended, other communities representatives were not there for various reasons. So unfortunately, we just had informal conversation with a member of the South Kingstown Town Council and myself. And some said they couldn't come, some didn't respond, and it's frustrating. We had a deal with all the member towns, but for whatever reason, they, they're not there. So we hope that things will, will move forward. We did, both of us that were there, urged the executive director to try to set up something with planners. I know that's something that aren't nationally sweet, that said, that you wish they could do, especially in smaller towns, like to, 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 to work together or at least talk amongst themselves about the issues that they face. I guess some of the larger towns say, hey, we're all covered, we got a full-time staff. But the point is, I haven't heard any more about that, so I will hope that next month, I want to tell you. Sorry.
Um, we skipped over the annual job board.
Well, that's a short report too. Some of you know that there was a graduation, you know, a couple of Saturdays ago, there were eighty-eight, uh, students. But the, the good thing is, and I believe there was reference to this in an article in the Standard Times. I think fifty, and I, I, I thought I'd say it, I can't find it, but I think over fifty of those graduates are already employed, have employment already as a result of, of the work that they've done over there. I remember the E V thing is, they just, kids that, that come out of that welding program, go into a position, an electro, an electric weld, which is electric weld, which is a good thing. There were scholarships awarded, one from the Rotary Club in Wakefield for a thousand dollars, one from Makiki's Guidance Foundation, you know, that's the one that we give the permit to hold the annual festival. And New England, New England Tech generously gives all graduates of Job Corps a one thousand dollar scholarship, which probably doesn't go too far to their, but I'm told it was a pretty hefty, uh, tuition, but it's a sort of a come here, we'll give you a little help kind of thing. And there was a ProStrat competition, that's the advanced culinary program. Uh, they went to South Carolina, it was a national competition, there were fifty-two teams from across the United States. And our Job Corps Academy placed number twenty-five, which is pretty respectable, um, coming out of here. So I don't have anything else to tell you. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right, public safety?
Tom still back there?
He is not.
No. Not really much to report, the one thing is hurricane season started, so. So Tom left, yeah, help red, he's got his code red set up, if anybody's interested. I want to go to the town website and you can sign up and get your email notifications immediately from the emergency management, so that's about it.
I have a question. Uh, public, so we do public, we have the parade on, uh, Monday parade, I just wanna know, is there a reason why we don't, like, enter or submit a town vehicle in the parade at all?
You'd have to pay overtime.
That's the only, that's the only reason why?
That's the reason.
Have you done, have you done it in the past or all?
Not in twenty-five years.
Okay. Next up, the Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust.
Okay, I met with them last month and what they're doing, they've been doing their homework. They are basically building this up from scratch. They have met with a gentleman from the Rhode Island Land Trust Council. They've got some, some other land trusts from other states too, where they're working on a, a mission statement, policy, and everything else. And the one thing that, I don't have a star of any budget here, and I know this wasn't gonna cost taxpayers any money. To be a member of the Rhode Island Land Trust Council, this is, it's kind of, uh, their due schedule is two, two percent of your budget, they have zero budgets. But we come up with some figures, it, it's very minor what they mean. Two of the people that are there have already paid for a couple seminars out of their pocket. And they're looking for a total request of five hundred and fifty dollars. One hundred and twenty-five of that we're figuring is the membership fee of the Rhode Island Land Trust Council. And two hundred and seventy-five dollars is for all five members to go to a, their spring two thousand eighteen Rhode Island Land Trust Council meeting. I guess it's like a, an all-day affair where they create ideas. And then it was just a hundred and fifty dollars for like postage mailing, stuff like that, some promotion, just last, the total request was five hundred and fifty dollars for a year. And talking to Ken, the planning board has a surplus, so we're figuring on just taking from the planning board's surplus to pay the bills, so he'd have a vote, I guess, on that.
Is that still accurate?
They haven't spent their entire budget, that's correct.
They have not?
They have not.
They have not.
They don't have a surplus anywhere?
No, they have, they do. It's not a surplus, it's unexpendable.
It's unexpensed.
They haven't spent your money yet, so we're gonna spend some, we wanna spend some of it for them, so.
So this would be for?
For the entire year, that's all they.
No, but saying, so, so July, so it's like July one through six.
Yeah.
So this money we can't allocate until after, or until the F T M? We can allocate from this year's budget.
This year's. For the things that you can spend, for the things you can pay this year, or what do you, what's your cut date, August?
Uh, if it's encumbered.
If it's billed by June thirtieth.
June thirtieth?
But you said some have already expended some of it, so they just need to ask for reimbursement.
But any other things would have to go in somehow next year?
Well, or either that or just, at the F T M, there's an amendment maybe.
Yeah. There's no resolution. So you can't, uh, or, right?
But we can do it, but at the actual meeting, someone could change it, right? From the floor?
I don't, I don't believe so. Only if there's a res, like, um, if I remember right, only if the resolution's present at the meeting can you make a motion to amend it? You can't bring forward a new amendment.
Could you, could you just, could you amend an existing line item to include monies to be paid at four or something?
Yeah.
So it could amend to existing, all right, so the planning board just amend it at money?
And then the other thing is, we can just take it out of town health.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
Well, that's exactly what I suggest, Dan. You know, I, I really.
The, the whole thing's a learning process for everybody involved at that meeting, so.
And I, and I really think you need, you go back to them and say, of course, the council will support it because we want them, you know, to kick it off and feel like they are getting support. And if eventually they're at a place where they can in fact look for donations, they may in fact encourage people to do tax deduction donations to them. That's what other towns have done with their own interest. And so they will have money eventually to cover these basic expenses. I think we should tell them, we'll pay it out of our council fund.
And just to make notice that, when we met for the first time, they were, they had explained the budget process and I told them that we had a deadline for them to submit, and it was just a little too fast for them.
It's a long term, yeah.
So how much are they asking for, for us to expand for this fiscal year? Not, that's next year, but for this fiscal year, then we already expended, because if we're making a vote, I think we need to give an amount, correct?
They're not gonna wait till the last week of June? I'm gonna have to get your, the form of this one here.
Is it the third Thursday?
It's, it's on, it's on the calendar, it's, uh, if you have anybody that's.
It's right in front of you, Cal.
Oh, yeah, it is, if anybody has it, I'm looking at it upside down. What do you see, Ken?
Uh, June fifteenth?
June.
Financial town meeting.
Land trust, June fifteenth.
So is whatever they can get from Maria that's been encumbered by June thirtieth, or what's the deadline to get it to you?
Well, by before June.
Yeah, because it's from accounting, because it's, right, right, I wouldn't know the date was.
Right, as soon as they can.
So we can go like tonight if we don't have enough, are we voting?
I, I think if we go to authorize Maria to pay any of those bills, uh, the council.
Out of council.
Out of council, of council, if you have the, have the money in that line.
It's on read, but then on the fifteenth, which is.
It'll be on the bill sheet anyways, July.
Sure. The, uh, you know, the council set this up and now the council needs to support it.
When we were reading the membership fee of the Rhode Island Land Trust Council, it's kind of like, well, if we go by what they say, it's zero.
Well, okay, so.
We're just thinking, there's gotta be a minimum. Some of these towns, basically, so.
Should they do that?
Is there a motion?
Oh, I'm all that any, any expenses occur.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, to fund the Exeter Rural Preservation Trust budget request not to exceed five hundred and fifty dollars for fiscal year.
Have to see what it's coming from?
Oh, the monies, the money to fund this will be taken from the town council contingency fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from the council? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, I'm voting for it. All right. Next, we have the Exeter Public Library liaison report, myself. As we heard earlier, they, um, they are having a schools almost out party on June seventeenth, uh, from one to four P M. Also, starting July eleventh, their summer programs begin. And they also wanted to inform the public that in, on July and August, they are closed on Saturdays. Competing with the beach, cookouts is just not profitable for the town, I guess. Next, we have the North Kingstown Preserve at Roland Greens representative report. As of May, um, N L Realty has had, is being told to re, uh, submit their paperwork due to some procedural changes in North Kingstown. So they have to re-submit the project to the planning committee, or the planning commission, are they? Next, we have the town council assistant report, Richard.
So I've been, um, going back, we've repeated that tour with the budget and, um, everything seems to be fine. There's a couple, um, formatting issues and he also recommended taking out the resolution on the bachelor's memorial, so we've not really changed. Um, so the resolution should be ready tomorrow night, we sent out to everybody for review and then, um, the budget package is ready. I think we have everything we need. Maria said that it was approved at state, so we're ready to go.
Thank you. Thank you, and great for your hard work and the budget, Richard Brown, appreciate that.
Ken, a quick question, are you, you crafting a little cover thing highlighting some things that?
That we talked about.
Like we talked about.
I, I can give you that out before. You gotta keep it to one page.
Oh, no, I understand, but there was some, some of those significant.
Yeah.
Well, definitely the transfer station animal.
Right, right.
It's a little confusing within the budget.
Right.
But to explain that, and we talked about how we do that, and then, um, what, um, I think we said we were gonna leave the salary issues alone. And, um, that was pretty, the animal shelter and transfer station were the most significant things put on there. You know, two of them, I don't know if they have them written down, but the actual documents were done.
Okay. Could you use your email to us out?
Yeah.
So we can review it and it comes to put it back to you too. All right, next we have the solicitor's report, Jim?
Two, two matters concerning litigation that I, to the extent that I can talk about in public, um, first one is the grounding of the plant, which you know is in suit. We have been in touch with the state attorneys concerning procedural matters that's going along cooperatively. Nothing to report yet as to the exact procedure, but I can say that we're working on it together. Try to get it moved expeditiously. The one matter that we are also waiting for the state to reduce is a class one survey. My understanding is they're having some problems with that, but they're supposed to get me some type of communication on that that I'll be able to share with you when it comes in. So that's it basically on that case. Nothing hot happening right now other than discussing procedure, which most people is like watching the paint dry. So the, the second case is the Coleman case, just so you know what's going on there. That's the case, you might recall, where the applicant or the petitioner, Ms. Coleman, is essentially seeking to have the court declare that there are two lots, despite the fact that Court D only describes one lot. The curious part of it is that there's a, the town boundary cuts right through the middle of it, South Kingston on one side. South Kingston's building inspector, building official gave, building resulting official gave, this was the petitioner, a, a opinion that, that the lot in the back, let's say, the portion of the lot in the back on, on the South Kingston side is a buildable lot, which is interesting because there's no frontage on A Street. And what they're trying to do is establish a right of way from this back lot. Oh, excuse me, it's not even a back lot according to our position, from the back portion of the lot that's in South Kingston up to the frontage that's in, in Exeter. So we're opposing that very vehemently because we believe that it's only one lot, can't be further built upon, no matter which town it's in. Because it is, according to our records, a single lot and therefore can only have one, one use. The Coleman, the petitioner sought to accelerate that. We filed an objection. We don't have a problem with moving it along quickly, but acceleration, we don't want that to happen necessarily until we're sure that we have all the discovery that we need from the case. However, that motion could be heard very shortly. Could be that the case is accelerating. If it is, we'll be ready to go. The other motion was a curious motion that was brought called a motion for judgment on the pleadings, which the standard for that is the courts to look at the complaint and if the court finds as a matter of law by just simply looking at the other side's complaint and not our answer that raises questions of fact and denies certain facts that they brought, then, then they would be entitled to basically having the relief that they're asking for. So I, I think it's highly unusual for that type of motion to be brought, particularly where our town has denied certain of the factual allegations that they're asserting. So I feel fairly confident that we're gonna defeat that motion, but it will go forward probably on some kind of responsive basis. It's probably in the near future. I would, I would think that we might be able to see a resolution to this case before the end of the year. I feel fairly confident in the town's position on this one, but we'll, we'll take it as a vote and I'll keep to advice. That's basically it. Um, your men report.
Thank you.
No, no, not necessarily going to the executive.
Okay.
Jim, Kevin, just the one question, and I guess, and I know you were copied on the flag memorandum about the use.
I saw that, yeah. That's kind of a side issue. It does impact on it, side issue. Apparently, and this is something that was not in lawsuit, didn't come to my attention as a result of anything in lawsuit, but the planner does, or the zoning official has basically found out your town.
Yeah, well, the, well, no, no, this is the, well, the open space restrictions about putting on.
Oh, no, no, that's.
That's something different.
That's, that's the ZERO issue, yeah.
Well, yeah, and it said that, and I know it said if you have issues, the board seemed to think it was okay. If I read, I read it two or three times. I just didn't know if you'd had a chance.
Yeah, that has to do with a, a request that's being made for replacement of a building in.
No, it does mention.
What is designated as an open space zone. The language for the open space restriction was, I believe, crafted by the planning board. And typically, when there's a question as to how something's supposed to be construed, it goes to the already drafted. And what Ashley's suggesting there is that, you know, she went to the planning board and they felt that there should be a policy where in these types of instances, the planner makes an initial determination. And if she feels that it should go, if she has any question or doesn't feel comfortable making a call, she can refer to the planning board. I read that. I didn't think there was any particular problem with that other than, you know, that, that you might, you might consider that what the planner does is make a recommendation to the planning board with regard to what type of construction there should be. In that way, it would be an open process so that people who might disagree with it, have a public hearing, would have the opportunity to act if to put their input in. So, I mean, that was what, obviously, she's suggesting a policy. I'm not a policy person. However, that was my only thought when I looked at it, that it may, another way to do it is to just have the planner look through it and give a recommendation and have the town planning board either approve the recommendation or otherwise at an open meeting, which might.
Did you, did you reply?
No, I just got it in my packet.
Oh, I didn't want, that's right. I wondered if you had my.
Yeah, I did. I, I saw it, but it was, this act presumably.
No, no, that's fine. Can, can you, can you look at it and just send back that suggestion?
Yeah, well, it's not really a suggestion, it's just another alternative. I don't know if they thought about that. But now as far as I'm concerned, it's a planning board issue. This came up and I had suggested that the, the planning solicitor rendered his opinion and he didn't feel comfortable making, giving an opinion.
Oh.
And, and so.
That doesn't seem good. Never mind, I won't go there. I won't go there.
The, what you said, I think it's appropriate for the planner and the planning board to initially, to initially review that and to make a determination as to what the language in their, in their document, how it should be construed.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, don't worry. I didn't need it.
Yeah, no, no, it's okay. So this is a response to that, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and the response was, they will do that, but you saw what she suggested.
Sure.
Her making an initial determination. Only if she is about to deny it or has a problem with it, or doesn't, would go to the planning board. The other option that just pops into my mind is that she might just make a recommendation either way.
I suspect if you might have had, not had a chance, but like.
Absolutely.
I, I just, I'm curious about it. Yeah, okay, thanks.
If you want me to, I mean, I could, I could, I could, no, Ashley could just make sure, you know.
It's not, well, I think if you have a chance just to send it back, uh, it, it didn't come up, you had another chance to review, but you had a suggestion or like that, at least. At least as a.
No, I reviewed it. I, I, I mean, I don't wanna stunt because I'm not.
No, 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 no.
I mean, I did, I did review it. She sent it to me.
Yeah. That's okay.
And that's, that's really the only thought I had.
Okay.
Move ahead. Bill for preparation abatements. Bill sheet is first. I'll make a motion that we approve the bill sheet.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is the Tax Assessors Abatements. A motion to approve.
I'm all that they approve.
Is there a second? All in favor? And last, the Tax Collectors Remittances and Abatements. Are they actually approved? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, and there are other administrative issues. I would like to remind the council and the public that the next council meeting will be on July tenth, the next full meeting. It goes to July third. We did go back to the last meeting. Any other administrative issues? All right, we have the Communications. Number thirteen, which has been previously discussed.
And fifteen.
And fifteen. Number twenty-six.
Yes, that's been addressed.
Definitely done. And we have number twenty-nine and thirty. Twenty-nine and thirty. Go ahead.
To combat rising levels of contamination, Renon Resource Recovery Corporation announced a shredded paper will be no longer accepted in Renon's mixed recycling program. Also, with shredded paper is being discontinued curbside. Renon Resource will continue to accept shredded paper secured in a bag at their self-serve small vehicle area located at sixty-five Shumpike and Johnson, Rhode Island. Also, they have different type of local shredding events that you can take part in, just for your information.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Cal, number thirty.
And I'm sure it probably jumped out at all of you who read it. I mean, it relates to the, the issue of Barrowville and the energy citing, what's this thing called, the, uh, energy. Well, the energy, and the Energy Facility Citing Commission or whatever that just acts without, without any strings attached. And this comes from the, well, this comes from John Machiko, the town council president in Barrowville. And I'll just read the first paragraph. You may have seen the press release calling for the general assembly to take action on these referenced bills. I'm attaching a copy with a heartfelt request that you contact your local legislators and encourage them to support this bill. And that bill calls for changes in the way facilities are cited. We remember when they came here with the plea and indicated that the saying was done without any local input. And it goes on and on, and they did suggest a draft resolution. And my concern obviously was that it would be the other issue of time and the commonness of it. And I, I just, you know, it sounded like something should be changed, something should be done, but I'm not sure we can address it. I, I just, I just think that what happened in the Barrowville could happen somewhere else. So anyway, remember that we supported them in their opposition. In this opposition to the plan and now they're at another juncture. I just wanted to call it out. I don't know that we can do anything. I just, so to you, if you think it's worth, it's not on the agenda.
We're working on that.
I know.
It's July.
I know. I know.
The other council wanted to individually reach out, make the representatives look at it. All right, so I can. Assistant Communications moving into executive session. Is there any need to go into executive this evening? Do you got anything from our solicitor, anything from the council? All right. Is there a movement, uh, still through there? All in favor?
Aye.
Vern? Oh, Frank, Frank, second.
Look, Frank, glad to see you back. We have a very.